Yes, sir. Commissioner Doty.
Here.
Commissioner Madrid.
Here.
Commissioner Thomas.
Here.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Here.
And Chair Carwin. Here. Stand and face the flag for the salute. Commissioner Phillips, would you lead us?
Okay. Place your hands over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any modifications to our agenda this evening?
No, sir.
Any presentations?
No, sir.
Public comments, non-agenda?
No, sir.
All right, which brings us to item number seven, approval of the minutes from August 10, 2006.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing done, minutes are approved. We have no items on our consent calendar, nothing was added late on that? Excellent. Which brings us to our public hearing. Item number 9.1, conditional use permit number 2015-036. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners. Manny Baeza, our contract planner, has your staff report for this evening.
Chairman, Carwin, members of the Planning Commission. Here is an aerial of the project site. It's going to be located at the Valley Church of Christ. It's located on the west side of Del Monte Drive, south of Fox Grove Row Road, and east of Waverly Drive in the Sun City community of Menifee. The project site has an existing general plan land use designation of 2.1 to 5 dwelling units per acre, and surrounding properties also have this same general plan land use The project has a zoning of R2. Surrounding zoning for the project consists of R1 to the north, R2 to the south, and R1 to the east and west. Here is the aerial again of the project site. The actual tower will be located on a lot that's used partially for parking for the existing Valley Church of Christ. Surrounding land uses consist of residential development to the north, an existing church to the south, and residential development to the east and west. Brief description of the project. The applicant's proposing a 60-foot-tall faux church tower. Within the tower, there would be two equipment cabinets and a backup generator. The lease area is 26 feet by 26 feet, and the overall site, including the church site, is 3.1 acres. Here's the site plan for the project. The tower would be located in the center of the project site when you include the church property. The tower would be approximately 200 feet from Del Monte Drive and more than 120 feet from the closest residence located to the north. Here is a site plan again, or the lease area. It has a lease area of 676 square feet. The footprint of the tower is 24 by 24 feet, and all antennas and equipment would be located within the tower. Here are the elevations for the proposed tower. The tower was designed to match the existing church. It has a stucco exterior painted tan. It also has brown trim. Stone veneer would be added at the base of the tower to match the stone found on the existing church. There's also decorative crosses placed on the tower matching the cross found on the Staff's recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and to adopt the resolutions 1670 or 270 for the NECDAC and also the resolution for the conditional use permit based upon the findings and conclusions in the staff report. That concludes staff's presentation.
This time we'll open it up to the commission, find out if there are any technical questions of staff. Commissioner Thomas.
In the presentation, it didn't mention the height. I think it's 60-foot tall, is that correct?
That's correct.
What? I'm trying to remember. What did we end up saying the heights, maximum, max heights would be in our town?
70 feet.
70, okay, so we're below that. Has anyone, if anyone even knows, have the neighbors or anyone shown any displeasement with a 60-foot-tall tower near their homes?
No one's actually asked that. They'd asked about lighting, and we do have the dark sky ordinance, and I explained to them that we have that dark sky ordinance, and we have a condition of approval regulating exterior light for the site.
So they're basically, there's no lighting on the tower, is there?
There's no lighting on the tower. It's just for the equipment.
Then, this is just Verizon, or will there be co-location on this?
Right now, just Verizon.
Did they, applicant, maybe they could address it when they come up, did they mention co-location at all to staff?
The tower can co-locate. It has that ability.
I believe there's a T-Mobile tower on there as well, correct?
On this tower?
Already on the property?
There's no other towers on this property.
No. There is a, on Plan A1, I think they had a electrical facility there on Plan A1 that states T-Mobile, but the logo on that is Verizon.
Maybe the project representative can answer that question.
Okay.
So, T-Mobile apparently has a site approval. Hi, Brandon Olerm here on behalf of Verizon. T-Mobile had previously gotten a site approved, but they never built on the property. Correct? Do you guys still have a lease with them? And they're still leased.
You know, while you're there, what's the purpose of this tower?
It's to provide coverage for a gap in service in the area. And if you, if you went back to the aerial map, the surrounding residential area is what the RF engineer is trying to cover.
Is there a similar tower to it nearby?
I don't believe so.
So this isn't like one of those palm tree-looking towers, or?
I don't like those either. I try not to put those up.
I like, because you can't tell what it is. People think it's just part of the church, so.
Yep.
In the city, do we currently have any towers, cell towers, in residential areas? Or will this be the first?
I think we do have some. We can get back to you on that, I don't know for sure.
Yeah, I know there's one on Antelope. Not on Antelope. Down here, south on Vipers. Lennenberg, north of Newport. Echo Ridge, I think it is, has two of them right next to each other.
There's one on Murieta Road that's behind an existing church, and I'm pretty sure there's a lot of residences nearby. You can actually drive by and see it.
One thing I was looking for in the mitigated negative declaration is the noise level of the operation. Is there any?
There's no noise, yeah.
It's solid, it doesn't create an electrical hum or anything like that?
No, I mean, if there were, well, maybe the applicant can answer this question as far as the, using the generator, if the power goes out, there would be noise then, but otherwise, it generally doesn't have too much noise. And there is analysis in the initial study on that.
Let me get back to you in a second.
Sure.
Go ahead, I'll make you stand there while we're asking questions. So, but is it reflected in?
Yes.
The staff report? Where is that? Because I'm looking at the noise section, I didn't see that. I see a lot of reference to construction noise, but not operations noise. Just because it's in, my main concern is because it's in the core, and a lot of folks there are concerned about their quiet, that's kind of the whole point of the zoning over there. And I'd just like to know that the decibel level, the estimated decibel level for operation in the generator.
So in the initial?
Construction noise, I can deal with, because that's only temporary.
Yeah, so on the initial study, page 32?
Yep.
It says here, "Operation of the proposed project would not be expected to generate substantial noise, but would include the use of continually operating onsite outdoor cellular electronics, cabinets, telecommunications interface cabinets, both with air-to-air cooling systems, intermittent operations." That's it. And then it says, "Diesel generator could create noise in excess of 66.2 decibels." So it does have that.
And that table six, that's without the generator running?
Oh, yeah, without the generator, because the generator generates 66.2 decibels.
Generator located inside the tower?
Yes.
So that's going to absorb the sound anyway, so.
Yeah, it's within the walls of the tower.
If electricity goes out, then it'll kick in.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that leads to a question about fuel storage. Are you going to have an above-ground tank or a below-ground tank, or is the tank going to be vaulted?
There are?
I think that will come with the construction documents.
Yeah, the Department of Environmental Health reviews that.
Okay.
Any other technical questions of staff before we open the public hearing?
I do. On the, on the west side of the property, there's a new utility pole. Looks like maybe 20 feet away from an existing utility pole. Is that pole going away, or are they going to have two right next to each other?
There is a new one. Maybe the applicant can explain this better. As it was explained to me, it has to do with easements. If they don't, if they rely on the existing pole, they'd have to obtain an easement, an additional easement for the power lines. And by using this new pole, that allows them not to have to get that easement, which is more difficult to do, so.
Okay.
Staff questions?
I think, I had one, well, this is a moot point, but I was going through the conditions of approval, and they are not signed. And I was wondering, is there a signature on record, or, because what happens if we approve this and they find a glitch somewhere in all of the paragraphs, they haven't signed this thing yet, and I was wondering, is there a caveat or something on that?
They have to follow the condition, that's part of the approval, is, are the conditions of approval. If they want a condition removed, they have to state that. They can appeal it to the city council that they want a condition removed, but that's part of the project, are the conditions of approval, which are just as valid as the plans and the analysis and the findings.
Okay. And the last question that I had was, I kind of wish that we had a contour map with the site plans, because when you visit the site, that term relatively flat kind of goes out the window, because there is a sloping directly south going toward those residents. And when, I'd like to thank the Director Wyman for giving me the geotechnical report. That's, that site is vulnerable to flooding, and all that water's going to be running into those residents, and that may be somewhat accelerated by this construction. I would have liked to see a requirement or some kind of a request made to developers to at least provide a generalized contour map so that we can understand how the terrain slopes. That's one of my major concerns.
We can get that for, you know, future projects.
Yes.
We can have that included.
All right, thank you.
Any other staff questions? All right. So at this point, let's open the public hearing at 7:13 PM. Do we have a proper notice?
Yes, sir, we do.
Any correspondence received?
Yes, sir.
At this point, does the applicant care to make any opening comments?
So I just wanted to add regarding the generator, the walls of the lease area, the tower itself will dampen some of that noise, and it would only be on in the event of an emergency, like the power was wiped out.
So it doesn't come on like every night at 8 o'clock?
No, when a tech visits the site, which is usually like four to six weeks, they would cycle through just to make sure everything is functioning, but it's, you know, like a 20-minute test, half an hour. And then, there was one other thing I wanted to say. Oh, we did end up getting the SCE easement, the landlord signed it, so we should not need that new utility pole, so that is also not necessary. We are using the existing point of connection on the property. And I'm here if you have any other questions.
I have a question, then.
Yeah, go ahead.
Co-location, we'd like to minimize the number of these towers in the town. How many other carriers can you co-locate on this?
Well, we could put one other carrier in this. Due to the, yeah, due to the height limit and the minimum separation between antennas, it gets a little bit tricky to put more than that, especially with the new technology.
On your other Verizon towers, how many of them are actually co-located? Have other competitors located on them?
Most.
Most do?
I think most towers now, yeah, definitely.
Okay.
It's much cheaper for them.
So you, you have this similar-type tower in dense neighborhoods like this, and your complaints are?
I would say the complaints on these are probably nonexistent, because they're architectural, you can't see the antennas, they don't look like a cell tower, you know, you don't hear them, it just looks like in addition to the church more than anything.
Thank you.
I think because of where this is located, the residents of that neighborhood would want me to ask you the following question. Is there any ambient runoff of signal that's going to interfere with the operation of any other electronic devices? Because some of those homes are pretty close over there, 120 feet or so. So are you going to get any ambient electricity interfering with things?
No, but they operate on different waves from the FCC, so the interference should be nonexistent.
So you're not going to interfere with radio frequencies, FM frequencies, AM, that kind of thing?
We would be a lot of trouble if we did.
Exactly.
You know, other than the city, what other agencies do you have to submit plans for Plan Check?
We don't have to submit any other, I think we have to do a county fire review, and that's, that's it for this one, but.
How about Edison?
Yeah, well, with Edison, yeah, we do, and that's why we got the easement for the power pole.
Okay.
But not, no permits, other than county fire and city.
So the technical comes from Edison?
What do you mean, the technical?
The powers?
The power does, yes, and the, I think are, we're using... Yeah, existing telephone, whoever the telephone provider out there is, probably AT&amp;T.
It's not Verizon?
Is it Verizon? Oh, Verizon Fiber and SCE.
Okay, we're covered.
Why don't you pay your bill? I don't care.
We're covered. Any other inquiries from the commission? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, do we have any public speakers?
I apologize dreadfully that I missed a chance to communicate my horror of another apartment complex coming in Menifee at the August 10 workshop. On what planet does this developer live, thinking he's going to put in 750-square-foot apartments, large commercial buildings? So place this Mill Creek Promenade off the agenda and reject their plan. They've only had it out there for a year, and it should never come to fruition. Instead, I made it to the planning hearing on more dangerous cell towers. Communications with landlines did not generate this oscillating electromagnetic radiation that is punctuating the ionized gas lines, glass, gas particles of radio and ultraviolet waves with the use of cell phones and internet connections that is molecularly disturbing the aerial particles as it is now. These powerful pulses thermally raise the heat in biological systems, that's us and animals, the aerial particles, I mean, and raise temperatures. This impacts the brain and body with incompatible EMF radiation, which overpowers the brain. Cell towers increase risk of health issues for every thousand feet a neighborhood is within the proximity. Under 400 feet, there is a higher percentage of cancer risk. This electromagnetic radiation exposure is attributed to behavior disorders as depression, memory loss, mental, emotional confusion, and ADD in children. It is a thousand feet before harmful effects dissipate. Microwave radiation from cell towers passes through walls, windows, roofs, and your bodies. However, health considerations no longer influence the city's decisions. A congressional bill dismissed the health concerns as unwarranted reason to defeat a cell tower. However, new rules under the Telecom Act claim the new cell towers must first, A, occupy existing structures, or at least establish radio tower areas, and there are plenty of existing sites for any equipment that Verizon claims. Is that why you're replacing a church bell tower? No! Cell tower companies like Verizon are paying the rent at churches, fire stations, mini storage, to allow them to ignore the health effects right in the middle of Sun City. Or are they trying to drum up business for the doctors and hospitals? B, they must have 200-foot setbacks with high-security fences. They are a terrible fire hazard in the middle of a neighborhood, because they use diesel for backup generators, not even biodiesel. They don't even try to step forward-
Thank you, Ms. Miller, it is your time.
Into the 21st century. People involved in communities should stand up against this. However, cell towers also sedate populations with these electromagnetic waves, and they were-
Ms. Miller, that's your time, thank you.
... by the unintelligent community. You call them the military, unintelligent community.
I have no further speakers, sir.
That's a shame. I'd just like to take a moment to say that I wish that we had students here to listen to Ms. Miller's presentations, because her vocabulary is top-notch, and I really do appreciate her viewpoints in coming down here and speaking, because it's so well-written. To hear, the language that she uses is just impressive, and I'm glad to hear every time she comes in.
Can I ask you for questioning, Mr. and the man on your desk?
Yes.
Right.
No other public speakers? All right, so at this point, we will close the public hearing at 7:22 PM. And at this point, the commission can, can ask questions. Do we have any inquiries from the commissioners, having heard the measure from the applicant, and public testimony? Now, I'll jump in, I do have one. Is there, is there a, like a property tax or fee or licensing that comes to the city from the occupation of this tower?
We usually have to have a business license to pull the building permit.
That would be, it would be a business license.
So other than the operation, I'm saying, is there a financial benefit to the city for that tower being placed there? Is there, could the arrangement for placing the tower, that's private property owned by the church, but the operation of that business on that private property, does that require any kind of permit or fee to the city?
Just the business license.
Just the business license.
Just the business license, and there may be a change in the property tax valuation of the property now that there's a new building on it as well, which indirectly comes to us, but that's about it.
All right, that's the only question I had. Commissioner Phillips?
I've made all the comments I wanted to make. I did take a look at Mrs. Miller's concern about human exposure to radio frequencies, and I can't see, based on the past history of those sites here in Menifee, that there is a real problem. I have some technical reports on this human exposure that she was talking about. I'm basically in favor of the project.
Yeah, I just have, so my comment is, I really like the design. I haven't seen one, I guess if there was one, I didn't know.
Yeah, that's a Menifee tower.
I'm so used to seeing those ridiculous pine tree things, that seeing a little bit of creativity is really appreciated. You know, it makes me, it makes me smile just a little bit every time I go by that water tower, one over there on Scott. Remember when that proposal came in here, and I see it built in there, and it looks really nice, I think. So the tower over there, I think fits in nicely, and it's, I like the aesthetic of it, because people in TV and movies and things like that, they're used to seeing these big towers by the church, and it fits in everybody's perception of what a church looks like, so I appreciate the creativity in that, and not putting a big pine tree in the church parking lot. Any other comments? So maybe we can take some action on the two resolutions? Anybody care to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number PC 16-270, adopting a mitigated negative deck on the findings of initial study and conclusion has no significant impact on the environment.
Second?
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
Chair Carwin.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution PC 16-271, approving the conditional use permit 2015-36, subject to conditions of approval and based on the findings and conclusions of the staff report.
Second?
Commissioner Doty.
Yes.
Commissioner Madrid.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
Vice Chair Phillips.
Yes.
And Chair Carwin.
Yes. All right, you've got your cell tower.
Oh, I did, I remembered what I wanted to say.
Nope, do it.
I just haven't signed conditions of approval, they were accepted by Verizon, they just have not made it in the mail to me, so I'll call Manny and have them expand. And the DC generators are all self-contained, they don't use extra fuel.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion items this evening?
I have a question. What has, if anything, has happened since the project that came before us in the last meeting at the workshop, Mr. Nagar? Have they approached staff and said, "Okay, we'll change this," or have they said, "Oh, we're going to go forward with an application," or what in the world are they doing?
I don't have any specifics on what they may or may not change on the project. There has been some communications with Mr. Nagar about possibly moving the project forward, and that is, that is something that they can choose to do if they would like to.
Okay.
I had a question for engineering. On Normandy Road, there's construction going on there in the street, looks like they're laying some sort of lines in there. Is anybody monitoring what they're doing? Because they, they're really not filling the holes very well that they're cutting in the street. They patch them with asphalt, and it just sinks right in, so you've got these giant, they've been out there three times trying to refill these holes, and they're not doing it properly. Is there anybody from the city out there monitoring what they're doing?
It should be. Actually, our public works inspection team should be monitoring that. So are you talking about the area by AMR, or?
The area by Champion Self Storage, between Berea and Lolladera.
Oh, okay.
It's on, it's on Normandy between Berea and Lolladera. They're, I don't know what they're, if they're doing electrical, or, I think they're doing electrical over there. They cut the whole street up to do some work underneath, and there's these holes where they patch them with the asphalt, and it's just sunken.
Okay.
So they've got these big potholes that they created and aren't filling properly. I'd like to see if anybody's monitoring that, and if so, maybe we can get somebody to take a look at it.
It should be, and we will, I will talk to our public works inspection and make sure that that's being checked.
Thank you.
Usually before they can do anything, we mean our right of way, we give them an enforcement for it.
Right. I'm sure they're doing it legally, they're just not doing it very well. All right. Community Development Director comments. I look forward to this section every meeting.
Well, after our last meeting where I rambled off, plethora of new businesses coming into the city, I'll just make some small comments on some ones that are actually open now. Aldi's opened, I think since the last time we met. Rubio's has opened, The Habit opened today. We had the grand opening. And then some forward come, forward projects, the Stater Brothers continues to move forward with their development. And we had some great news at the Menifee Lakes Plaza, just on the other side of the freeway. They will start grading, at least for the LA Fitness, and some other small portions, hopefully this week. They have the water tower out there and the grading item out there, so that'll be moving forward.
Commissioner reports on committee activities. We had a Menifee Citizens Advisory Committee meeting this week, and we went over the community block grant funds that were issued by the MCAC. Turns out, a couple of the recipients didn't use all the money, so we're going to have some stuff rolling over to next year. By about $3,000, they were short. I think it was a new applicant who overestimated. Part of it is the amount of money that they have to be awarded as a minimum, is sometimes more than they need. We can't go smaller than $10,000. So we got some good reports back on that, and there's going to be a Menifee Citizen of the Month/Year. I guess city council's going to nominate a Citizen of the Month every month. I guess city council's gonna nominate a Citizen of the Month every month, and then at the end of the year, the Citizens Advisory Committee gets to pick from those people to be Citizen of the Year. So if you have anybody who you'd like to nominate, contact your city council person and get an application in on their behalf. And then the last thing is, through the community block grant, one of the things that the MCAC is sending up a formal recommendation to council about is creating a position through block grant funds for a homeless liaison individual whose costs and salary could be covered by the community block grant funds, because our population of homeless people in Menifee isn't large enough to warrant an entire facility or a department or anything like that. But one person to go around and keep contact with the, the homeless people we know about in the city and direct them to resources that could help them that exist. You know, a person could come in once or twice a month and make those contacts and make contact with people and get them hooked up. You know, more of a, an agent, say, than providing services, or more informing them and getting them rides or things like that if they need to be serviced, because there's larger organizations in the city of Riverside and things like that who are looking to help those folks, but they're not getting funding from us, because the majority of the money would go outside the city. So we want to be able to, to make that happen. So that recommendation of creating a possible claim for block grant funds under that is coming from MCAC up to city council. So that happened on Monday, which is kind of a cool thing for the city. Any other committee reports? Nope? All right, so at this point, I've said at this point at every time so far, I gotta stop doing that. I guess we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned at 7:32.